Welcome back from our six-week hiatus. Good to see the administration and everyone, including the mayor, is here. So hopefully we'll have a good meeting. As this is the first meeting since July 3rd, believe it or not. It's August 20th, 2018, after 7:30 PM. If anyone got their vacation in, I hope they had a great vacation. And it's good to be back here to do some city business. I was glad we did not have to have a special meeting, so appreciate that. And pinch-hitting for Mr. Apollo tonight, as you can see, is our Assistant Law Director, Mr. Kevin Gibbons. And if he would, would you please, as the clerk of counsel tonight, call the roll?
Mr. Ansel?
Here.
Mr. Bustansik?
Here.
Mr. Kavan?
Here.
Mr. Myers?
Here.
Mr. Sanders?
Here.
Mr. Silvestri?
Here.
Ms. Warden?
Here.
And everyone's here, so we do have a quorum. The agenda will remain as presented. And just forewarned to the administration, Ms. Warden will not be here on the 4th. And so if we're not going to have six people here, if someone else doesn't make it, anything that's required to be passed on the same evening will have a problem. So forewarn now is forewarned. So at this time, I ask that you stand and join the members of the City Council in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. And I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes of July 2, 2018.
So move.
Move to approve by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Silvestri. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The minutes of July 2, 2018 are approved. Mr. Mayor, welcome. And look forward to what you have to say. It's been awhile.
It has been awhile, so thank you, President Biden-Dyke and members of council. Nice to have everybody back and hopefully you had a good month and almost a half off. It is some refreshment to everybody and that we can be ready to tackle things. We actually have had a pretty busy time since last we've met, so please bear with me, but there really, the majority of them, all have very good things. Just want to first tell you that the Northeast Quad down at the square is very close to completion. We have scheduled a ribbon-cutting slash business after hours with the Chamber and Main Street and the public, of course, on Tuesday, September 4th, at 5:30 PM. So it's before our city council, our next city council meeting, Tuesday the 4th of September. So please, I'm enjoying this. More information to come and how we've just really sort of secured that with the Chamber and Main Street. So looking for a fun time, but the quad should be finished at that point. First, I want to start out with the thing you've probably heard a lot about over the summer is paving, because either people couldn't get where they were going, or they were happy to see as much happening. So I'm going to turn it over to Joel and Roger to sort of update you on paving and also a very nice recognition that our city received.
Joel?
Thanks, Bob. I just wanted to give you an update. Roger put these statistics together. I'll just give you the overview. If you have any detailed questions, you can ask Roger and Kurt Denny. Those have been the two between the large projects that you bid out that engineering manages and some of the smaller projects that our maintenance crews do. We have done almost three and a half million dollars' worth of paving this year. That is, I didn't go back and look, but that is the most I can remember in recent history for several years. And that is almost 11 miles' worth of paving in the city. So we have done considerable, considerably more paving work this year than we have in the past. And there's just a few little things to finish up, and Roger has the details on a couple of projects there. A couple roads that are finishing up here, but for the most part, they're pretty well done. I think Maintenance has one more road they're going to try to get in here. Or three more roads, and we just approved another one here. But so about another, a little over half a mile, half a mile, three-fourths of a mile of road they're going to do some minor resurfacing and patching on. So I'm sure we can have some more detailed conversations. We can close the budget and talk about it for next year. But just to let you know, we've done a considerable amount. And just, we always talk about the list that we have. So, you know, as far as engineering goes, major projects, they work from the top down off of that list. The ones that we know are further down, those are some of the ones that our maintenance crews will work on. So even if a less-traveled, smaller road is further down the list, doesn't mean it's not going to get some attention. It just might not get completely redone for a little while. So they'll do some minor repair and some preventive maintenance. So just wanted to let you know there. Welcome to ask Roger or Kurt some specific questions if you have some or follow-up at any time. The other thing we wanted to mention is we had, since we had taken over the digested facility at our wastewater treatment plant, and that's running very, very well right now. Kevin Gibbons and Steve Carruthers are doing a really good job there. So, you know, we're obviously a lot more selective in the kinds of feedstocks that we take in and how we operate that. But then we submitted that to a couple of agencies that look at wastewater agencies, and there were 32 utilities that were recognized for stewardship, recovery of resources such as water, energy. And so we were recognized as one of 32 in the country as a utility of the future for taking, really transforming traditional wastewater system into a resource recovery center. We make all the electricity for a wastewater plant, most of the electricity for a water plant. So we were recognized by the Water Environment Federation, the National Association of Clean Water Agencies, and the Water Research Foundation. So it's a fairly prestigious award, only 32 in the entire country were awarded that. So that's some good news for our utilities.
Great. Thank you, Joel. Very proud of our guys in the utility divisions here in Worcester for all their efforts to get some national recognition. Just wanted to share with you a magazine put out, and it's called Efficiency Today. It's done by AEP Ohio. So it's a magazine that goes throughout the state of Ohio that AEP itself publishes. And I put a copy on your desk just to show you that highlight Worcester Community Hospital as an area that has done lots to garner efficiency. In fact, we received a check for $86,007.05 from AEP because of incentives that we followed and to save electricity and to be more efficient. So that's a very nice article. In the same magazine, it was a surprise, but they also, on the back of your sheet there, they highlighted Gojo as a place pumping out energy savings in Worcester. Gojo. So very nice. We get two bites of the apple for our city and area and a statewide publication. So thought you would be appreciative and interested in that. I wanted to let you know, I was at a hospital conference in Nashville, Tennessee about a week ago with Quorum Health Resources. Quorum has been our outside entity that helps us manage our hospital or guide our hospital. And Bill Sharon was at this meeting and was surprised with a new award they've done, a national award they called the Innovator of the Year Award. So Bill Sharon was named from 177 hospitals that they represent, small to large throughout the country, as being one of the most innovative people in the Quorum Health Resources enterprise. So a very high honor for Bill and for our community. So good things there. Andre has some stuff that he'd like to share with you about finances.
Just quickly, on your desk, you'll find the 2017 Conference of the American Labor Department of War. The honor has not been issued yet by the Honor State, but it should be shortly. I will let you know when that happens. The second thing is, is we actually have started our 2019 budget process. Just met with Roger and Kurt, a bunch of the folks, September 4th last week. So Joel's been obviously meeting with them, but we're going to have an aggressive schedule this year because we have a lot of things going on, like a conversion from, a software conversion, you know. They recall that. But anyway, so that's what's happening with our own finances.
I was just going to ask you about that. Is that going all right, that conversion?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's, yeah, it's very interesting. It's just, it's challenging. It's busy, okay? It's very busy. But, I mean, it's good. We're excited, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Few more things. You may have heard, there's some definite conversation going around town about people sleeping on the benches in the downtown area. I just want you to know that we and the administration and the police force are very aware of this. It's been something that we've been conversing about internally for a number of weeks now. We are looking for ways to address the situation. We will be rolling some solutions out in the near future to help address it. But this is not an easy situation. Cities all across the United States are dealing with these kind of things. And so we are trying to be innovative ourselves in addressing the problem. So that's about as much as I can tell you at this point in time, but if you ever have any questions about that, feel free to give me a call or Chief Fisher back here a call because we've, as I said, had good conversations. John Scavelli, our new law director, is starting at our next council meeting on September 4th. So we are looking forward to having him on board and being a part of our team. And our thanks sincerely to Kevin Gibbons, who has been an awesome guy to stand in for us and keep the ball rolling here in the city. And for that part-time job, it really is going to start becoming more part-time again, so.
Promises, promises.
Promises, promises. But Kevin's done a great job keeping us moving forward. Something else I placed on your desk, and I would like to bring something forward legislation-wise at the next council meeting. It's concerning the Junior Fair Event Center. I'm sure you've probably heard about this down at the fairgrounds. They're trying to build an event center that would, I think, seat 800 people is what the information is on the inside, or the one side of your photocopy piece. This is something that they've asked the city to consider being a part of. We talked internally about this and said, you know, it does bring something to Worcester that we don't have right now, and that is spaces for meetings. And it brings it in context to our downtown. Sandra Hall and Marty Starkey from the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and Sandra, of course, from Main Street, both said this will be a good thing for the downtown. It will bring people in and bring them into our downtown. So they're both supportive of this. So I would like to bring a number forward to you for having the city be a partner in building this event center. We did it with the pools at the high school when they asked us to help in reconditioning of that, and this would be the same type of thing. One thing about this, we do get bed tax monies every year from people staying and lodging around. This would be an economic development tool, and so we could utilize the bed tax funds that we receive to be a partner in this event center. Unless I hear some strong negatives from people between now and our next meeting, I will plan on bringing the legislation forward to be a partner with the event center. The city received a Clean Ohio grant. That's here on the sources and use of funds. This is for Venture Boulevard Park. We did receive $437,598 in the Clean Ohio funds. Jonathan Malley wrote the Clean Ohio grant for us, myself and Jonathan, and one of our interns this year, Kevin White, went over and presented in front of the Clean Ohio Board, and luckily we were found to be worthy of being funded. So we received that. We received $300,000 earlier in state-line item monies from something that Scott Wigum and Frank LaRose put into this city, or I'm sorry, the state budget. And Joel was very instrumental in making that happen for us. So things are moving forward with the Venture Boulevard Park. Probably won't see any type of construction or anything until next year, but at least money-wise, we're following the plan. The only thing left that we have is the Nature Works grant at the very end for $79,157. So just wanted to keep you up to speed on that. And lastly, we just had a meeting this afternoon at 5:30 with the Humane Society. This is one of several we've had since last we talked. Things are progressing very well, and I'm happy to say that. We decided that by working together, we can bring a humane agent to the city of Worcester. And so that is our plan. We're putting some things into the works, but hopefully before the end of this year, we'll have a humane agent that will serve our city. They were very good to work with, and we surely thank the Humane Society for all their efforts in helping us move forward. So that's everything I have for you.
Well, the only thing I ask is rather that later, sooner rather than later, is get that information out about what you're contemplating about the event center. I'd like to give Ms. Warden the opportunity to maybe comment on it since she's not going to be here, and I think most of the council would like to have plenty of time to look at.
I can give you the number I'm contemplating right now is $30,000.
Okay. Yeah. Because it looks like a good idea, but then I'm a little concerned when it's, because it might be heated and air-conditioned. So it wouldn't do much good in the wintertime. And if we have a summer like that, the last place I want to be with 800 people, even if they're shower-freshes, to be confined in an un-air-conditioned building. Just saying.
I believe it is a full-functioning event center, so that air-conditioning and heating that.
Well, it says depending on fundraising, the building will be heated and air-conditioned. So that doesn't sound like a given to me, so.
Maybe we should get 50.
What?
Maybe we should get 50.
Yeah, that's right. Or the swine barn might be looking pretty good on a hot day anyways. But yeah, if you, you can get the, you've given us the number, so I would ask everyone to look that over and, you know, direct their comments to the mayor or Joel, who I recognize Joel does have a good taste in sports coats there.
Quick question.
What's the, I couldn't see it here real quick. What's the estimated cost of?
Of the event center?
Mm-hmm.
It's on the top of my head. I think it's about, I don't know.
Okay.
200, boy, no, I don't know that number. We'll have it for you next week, or I can send it out. In fact, if I can, John Crum is sort of the lead in raising funds for this. I'll see if he'll attend our council meeting on the 4th if possible.
All right, good stuff. We do have a couple of liquor control notices for liquor licenses. I'll turn this portion over to Mr. Gibbons, if he would. First one is Michael E. Homerin.
Michael E. Horner Incorporated, doing business as Nold Avenue Bar and Grill, 924 Nold Avenue, Worcester, Ohio. This looks to be, I think, a D-5.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it is.
Is this one supposed to be just a transfer of licenses?
Yes.
Application for change of corporate stock ownership is what it appears to be.
Right.
There's no from information on it or nothing.
Yeah.
So no change of the services being provided?
No, it looks, it looks like maybe he's added his spouse as a shareholder.
His son.
Or son.
Brody succession plan in here.
Mm-hmm. That's what it looks like. So as you know, we have three options. We can request a hearing here, request a hearing in Columbus, or waive the hearing. So what's your discretion, counsel?
Motion to waive hearing, Mr. President?
Motion to waive hearing by Mr. Ansel.
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Would you please call the roll on the motion to waive hearing?
Mr. Ansel?
Yes.
Mr. Kavan?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Silvestri?
Yes.
Okay. We'll probably ask Mr. Apollo to send the notice to the Department of Liquor Control that we are waiving the hearing on that one. And then we have Nussflick LLC.
Nussflick LLC, doing business as Meatheads Union of Ohio, 147 South Market Street, Worcester, Ohio. This appears to be a D-5 L permit.
Yes.
Is this a new one?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
But it wasn't, I didn't see attached information.
I didn't see any either.
So anyways, I assume he wants to, I don't know what D-5 L is.
It'll be, he'll be serving.
Serving?
Serving, yeah.
Okay, all right. Well, once again, this is a new one.
He's currently changing the setup. I was in there talking.
Must be, must be competing with a spoon if he's serving alcohol there.
Quite possibly.
Okay.
He is remodeling currently.
Okay. So once again, we have three choices. Have a hearing on the matter here, or have a hearing in Columbus, or waive having a hearing.
I moved to waive.
All right, motion by Mr. Bustansik to waive hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Heard Ms. Warden's voice. Second by Ms. Warden.
Mr. Ansel?
Yes.
Mr. Kavan?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Silvestri?
Yes.
Mr. Bustansik?
Yes.
Okay, we'll waive the hearing, and I'm sure Mr. Apollo will issue a notice to the Department of Liquor Control we are waiving our hearing. We have one individual sign up for communications from public. Mr. Garrus, would you stand, state your address, and tell us what you want to talk about on 2018 Day 046, with regard to hiring of an auditor?
My name is Mr. Garrus of 347 North Ground Street, and I'm opposing, I'm opposing this resolution tonight to authorize the Director of Finance to take upon the city this accounting firm, large shape for acting for auditing services, again, I think, because if it's going to be another performance audit, I think the town should do better. I think it needs to have more than a performance audit. And I'm thinking maybe too, with this income tax law that was passed last year, it may have to become more than just a performance audit. Just my guess, unless, excuse me, maybe Mr. Ansel will have that tonight in part of this discussion. Anyway, I'm opposed to this. Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. Committee reports, I don't think there were any committee reports, but we do have a public hearing, which
Yes, we do.
will be chaired by Mr. Sanders, the Chairman of the Laws and Ordnance Committee. So I will turn the floor over to you, sir.
Thank you. Yes, we'll open the public hearing, and this is to hear comments relating to amending Section 1113.01 of the Planning and Zoning Code. Just give a briefs. Basically, what we're doing here is the amendment will remove the requirement for all fences on a single property to have a unified style. They will still have to have a unified color, but the change will allow for common fence configurations, which will in fact often incorporate different styles. With that, I'll open the floor for anyone in the public that has any comments, either pro or con. Mr. Garrus?
I'd like to know if, whether it's the color, what offense, if you need to paint it, or even if you wish to put a fence up, does a fence need a permit from the city?
Yes.
Does a fence need a permit if it needs to be repainted?
No, that's maintenance.
I'm only asking because to my understanding, the gazebo didn't get a permit. So why do you need a permit for the fence? Pick a fence in your yard when a $2 million gazebo did not get a permit?
Can't answer that, don't know.
Maybe the law director deputy can have an answer for that.
Well, and you're going far afield. We're having a public hearing on these zoning
But it's a funny analogy, don't you think?
Where it doesn't pertain to what the public hearing is about.
Mr. Dutton, did you have anything to add related to this change in the zone code?
Oh, I did not. Basically, you explained it's a minor change, I mean, with only the style and the color, can we unify color, will stay the same as it's currently?
And at this point, it was approved unanimously by the Planning Commission after the suggestion to the change was sent back to them for their review. They reviewed it, and they approved it unanimously.
Correct.
Okay. All right, well, that's, any comments from Kevin?
Couldn't this be remedied by a variance? If a person did want to change it, could they just, couldn't we just go through that process?
I'll tell you what, I'm going to defer that to Mr. Dutton in terms of
Yeah, you can ask for a variance in any section of the Planning and Zoning Code regarding use or setbacks or fencing. That could all be taken into the board of zoning, I guess.
That seems to me to be the easier remedy. Mr. Silvestri?
By way of review, though, I mean, we had set this in motion when we, as a council, had decided to make one change to our new Planning and Zoning Code, right? And then if I'm not mistaken, this is the change that we had decided on as a council. Then it went to Planning Commission, and I wasn't sure, Mr. Dutton, because it said it received the required votes when I read through my packet of information. Usually you give us the vote, and I just thought
Six to zero.
Maybe there was something shrouded there, but I appreciate you coming forward with the vote. So if you could do that in the future, it would, it would be helpful to have the vote there. But I'm glad to hear it was unanimous because I didn't get a chance to call you on such a minor issue, but that was a question I had, and I reviewed it. And then since it was approved, this is the same thing that we had initiated as a council coming back to us right now for public hearing, correct?
Yes, correct. I'm aware, and I posed it last time. That's why I Okay. I guess, thank you. I just wanted to make that clear for the sake of the public. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, well, there's no other conversation, then we will close this public hearing. Thank you.
All right, thank you for holding the hearing on the change to the zoning with regard to fence color. That's, we'll consider that to have had the public hearing. Not a lot of hue and outcry. We have no unfinished business, so we turn our attention to new business. First reading of Resolution Number 2018 day 045. Mr. Gibbons, if you would, please.
A resolution to adopt the June 12, 2018, update of the Wayne County Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Mr. Cavan, the floor is yours. I note this is slated for three readings. My guess is, we have very little option but to comply with this, but I'll leave it to your discretion as to what you want to do.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, this is a resolution to adopt the updated Wayne County Hazard Mitigation Plan, of which we are a part of several other local entities. By doing so, by signing up and joining the other cities and villages in Wayne County, it, it makes us eligible for FEMA money, should there be a instance where we need to apply, but we go along with the plan, the analysis, pretty much as written. There's usually not a lot of variation in that, but the plan does talk about some of the things that could happen, and we do have a plan that is overseen by, I believe, the federal government to make sure that we are doing everything we can to be prepared. And I believe Mr. Salee's here, Chief Salee, I did speak with him earlier today, and there weren't too many changes from the previous legislation, I didn't think.
No. The previous plan, it's almost housekeeping, the major goals stayed the same. We did identify a few new projects, you know, particularly for the city of Worcester, we talked about utilizing a, or identifying a location for severe weather, like safe areas for tornadoes, and that's a high occurrence based on probability and our history, and then also working through the planning and zoning to identify and development of, like, repairing setbacks, is that the right term?
Yeah.
Ordnance for that, so we can reduce some of the flooding potential. So, we worked through zoning and building standards, along with our office, and police, and some others, to identify some hazards that we could incorporate into the plan, you know, throughout the county. And then we also join in the rest of the county as a whole for tornado site updates and things such as that.
But it is a prerequisite in order to receive FEMA funds, should we need them, but more than that, it's a good idea. So, I would ask if there's any questions from other council members? I would like to suspend the rules of council and place Resolution 2018 dash 045 on third and final.
A motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Cavan, is there a second? Second by Mr. Bostancic. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Mr. Ansel?
Yes.
Mr. Cavan?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Silvestri?
Yes.
Mr. Bostancic?
Yes.
Okay, the rules are suspended. Mr. Bostancic, I look to you again.
I'm making a move to the top.
Oh, no, I'm looking at Mr. Cavan.
Wait a minute.
Wait a minute.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You're the last one I called on.
Somebody call 911, wait a minute.
See, we already have our first disaster meeting coming back after the hiatus.
I would make a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Cavan, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Silvestri. Any other further comments or questions?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. Chief Salee, you're saying that the part of this, they enhanced the legislation or the ruling related to repair and setbacks?
No, that is just one of the recommendations that we, as a group, had discussed as a, as an option, due to reduce or minimize future impact if there was a disaster. So, one of the goals of the plan is that, if that is something that council would like to do, is pass ordinance to minimize those effects. So that would be an established goal for Worcester specifically, as part of the, as part of the planning.
Let me ask, let me ask this question to Joel, then. Don't we already have, I mean, through Ohio EPA, aren't we already, I mean, legislated, mandated on repairing setbacks throughout most of, most of what we have in the community anyways?
There are some requirements that are geared more towards polluting, you know, on the stormwater side of things, and the statewide permit there.
Okay.
And that's, that's geared more towards limiting pollution getting into streams. So what Barry's talking about would be more in terms of, and I don't know what the difference in the limitations would be, with the setbacks, for like a flood event or something like that.
Well, because, yeah, my understanding is, is that, I mean, every time I've ever dealt with this in other communities, it's, it's all in the same. I mean, it's water volume, it's pollution, it's, so I guess I'm not really understanding how we're tying repairing setbacks into County Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Just to clarify is that, when we were discussing issues with Tim and A, and then we also discussed it with Roger, what he was, who was predominantly, Lance is going back parcel by parcel through the flood zone area, looking at those areas that have potential for storage sheds, or other, you know, ancillary buildings being built on those particular flood plains, so that if we would then pass an ordinance to minimize the opportunity for people to build in those, so that there isn't future, you know, loss of property in those areas. That's where it comes back down, or comes to on that, from a parcel perspective in GIS.
I still don't understand that, because there's already, there's already regulations in the Ohio Building Code that already dictates everything that you've just discussed, so that's fine. I just wanted, I just was wondering, I'm not sure I understand how this is getting tied into this, but that's fine. I appreciate the information, thank you.
Anyone else? Would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Mr. Ansel?
Yes.
Mr. Cavan?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Silvestri?
Yes.
Mr. Bostancic?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution Number 2018 day 045 passes. Mr. Ansel will be presenting Resolution Number 2018 day 046. Before I get to you, Mr. Ansel, I will ask if Mr. Gibbons would please read the title.
A resolution authorizing the Director of Finance to enter into a professional services contract with the accounting firm Clark Schaefer Hackett for auditing services and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours. I note this is slated for three readings.
Yes. And I don't believe there's any real rush to move this through, so we can't let it go through three readings, but we are all aware that our three-year contract with Clark Schaefer and Hackett and Company for audit services will end, ended in December 31, 2017. They had a three-year run with us, and they've done a very good job. We've been satisfied with their services. The auditor of the state has informed us that their department will not be conducting Worcester's financial audit in the years 2018, 2019. In light of that, you know, to one of the public comments, generally speaking, when the state auditor feels you're in high compliance and things are in order, they will waive their financial preview to focus on those municipalities that require more attention. However, the failsafe is to continue the independent audit for the next two years through the reference firm, and we can either bid a two-year or one, two-year contract, or extend with Clark Schaefer. So, since they have the experience, they know to our accounting protocols, and for ease and clarity and efficiencies, they have agreed to maintain pricing of prior year's audits within 1%. You saw that the fiscal audit for 2018 is projected at $88,350. That's less than a 1% increase to prior year, and in 2019, another 0.88%, so less than 1%, which is lower than the annual CPI for a total of 89,125. So it's consistent with their prior year's audits fees with the less than a 1% increase. And please note that the hospital's portion of the audit expense is about $39,000, or 44% in each of the fiscal years referenced. So, it is a joint audit. The firm has good experience with the complexities of the chart of accounts in, of both the city and the hospital, so it's a prudent thing to do. It is required by the Ohio Revised Code to have the annual financial audit, so it's not like we have different options. There is no alternative, other than maybe competitively bidding it out, and before, they were the low bidders with the highest quality. So, in light of their challenge with the software integration transition and the experience, we'll keep this on first reading this evening, because it is not budgeted yet, because it's for the upcoming fiscal year, but it will be in the upcoming fiscal year's budget. So, we can wait and approve this at the next meeting on second reading, and it's pretty much administrative or slash accounting protocol. So, first reading tonight, and we'll reengage in our upcoming council session.
One I should point out, because we do have a hospital, that knocks out a lot of accounting firms able to do the audit, so. And once you find one that does a good job, try to keep them around as long as possible, so. Okay, Resolution Number 2018 day 046 has had its first reading. Turn our attention to amended Resolution Number 2018 dash 028. It will be presented by Mr. Bostancic. I note this is a budgeted item, looked like a little bit of housekeeping to add storm sewer in with regard to the improvements being, being made. Before I get to you, Mr. Bostancic, I'll have Mr. Gibbons, if he would, read the title.
A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the construction of sidewalks and curb ramps and storm sewer on Northwestern Avenue and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Bostancic, the floor is yours.
Thank you. This was passed previously, and the reason we need to have an storm sewer put in is we cannot draw from the sewer fund unless it is included into the resolution. So it's basically, again, another accounting function. That is pretty short and sweet, and it's all it is.
All right.
Any questions? It was inadvertently left out on the last time, and it's just a little bit of a housekeeping and
We like short and sweet.
We like short and sweet.
Or not.
It wasn't like a problem they found upon
No, to do any sewer work, they have to have that in the actual legislation, if you want to take some money out of the sewer fund for that.
Was that, was that amount included in the original budget item, or was that, basically, is this going to increase the cost of the project, from what we were presented with originally?
I don't believe so.
No, it's in the original budget.
Okay. So it's just putting it over the line?
It was out of the legislation.
We thought your office, Roger, was so aptly combining multiple projects at the last minute, but good foresight doing it ahead of time.
You have motions?
I, do we need to do?
No.
We don't need to do a third and final on this, do we just
No, it's budgeted.
Yeah. I, we'll pass the legislation.
Okay, motion to adopt by Mr. Bostancic, is there a second? Second by Mr. Cavan. Any other further discussion? Anyone want to hear Roger speak again? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Mr. Bostancic?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Silvestri?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Ansel?
Yes.
Mr. Cavan?
Yes.
All right. Amended Resolution Number 2018 day 028 passes. We'll be looking at ordinance number 2018 day 014. This will be presented by Mr. Sanders, who had the public hearing on the zoning code change with regard to color of fences. I will wait to call on you, Mr. Sanders, until after Mr. Gibbons has had the opportunity to read the title.
An ordinance amending Section 1113.01, Planning and Zoning Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Worcester.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours. I note it is slated for three readings.
Yes, it is. Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, as we had spoke previously at the public hearing, we're just making an adjustment to Section 1113.01, E8D2, to remove the requirement, remove the requirement for fences on a single property to be of a unified style. They will still need to be a unified color, but not of a unified style. This was really, this was brought forth due to a situation where there had been, basically what it boils down to is, we had a property owner that had a brick wall, or a stone wall, and attempted to try to put a fence in conjunction with that stone wall, and basically was, as it was defined previously in the previous code, that they were going to have to build another stone wall. And at this point, I don't think that was, I don't think that was the intent of the zoning of the code when it was written, and so consequently, thus, the reason why we have the request for the change. At this point, I'll open the floor for any discussion.
Mr. Cavan? Well, the reason that it began in the beginning was when the folks on Palmer Street put a privacy fence, and then they put a chain link fence about 10 feet in front of it. So it was very, very odd. So, that was where I think that it came from. But again, this, what we had would, would, would put a stop to that, but again, I mean, if someone wanted to request a variance, I think that would be the easier way to go about it, rather than change the, change it for everybody.
Well, just with regard to that, Mr. Cavan, what happened when the Planning and Zoning, people tried, amended the code, we made an amendment at that, that evening, where we took 11 words out, I think, was what we ended up doing. The result of that clarification that we felt we made at that time, it made the law difficult to implement. I, it corresponds with Mr. Dutton, who's here, and he can speak for himself, but he looked for my behalf and Mr. Sanders, at 15 area communities and their regulations, and was unable to find any regulation similar to either of those that you mentioned. Mr. Dutton then went on to continue to say that he was permitted to remove the entire section, as it is restrictive and difficult to implement. So I think the way we amended it with the 11 words missing made it difficult to implement, and that's why we're trying to clarify it today. All fences require a permit through the city, and they have the ability to apply for a variance to the Planning Commission, so they could still apply for whatever they'd like to do.
And that's why I brought it up, so.
Well, we don't need a law that's difficult to implement.
It fills, it would be easy to chase one property than all of them, than anybody else that would do that. Seems to me like that would be an easier course of action.
Okay, well, if that's Okay, well, if that's...
What's your pleasure here, Mr. Sanders?
In light of the fact that we had zero public outcry on this, I would motion to suspend the rules of council and place this on third and final reading.
All right. Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Bostancic, second by Mr. Myers. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Silvestri?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Ansel?
Yes.
Mr. Cavan?
No.
Mr. Bostancic?
Yes.
All right, the rules are suspended. Mr. Sanders, do you have another motion?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Any further discussion, comments? Grilling of Mr. Dutton, who is about as thrilled to speak in front of this body as Mr. Kobelarsik. Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Sanders, I'm sorry, Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
You need a vacation.
Mr. Silvestri?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Ansel?
Yes.
Mr. Cavan?
No.
Mr. Bostancic?
Yes.
Ordnance number twenty eighteen, day zero fourteen passes. First reading of ordinance number twenty eighteen, day zero fifteen. This will be presented once again by Mr. Sanders, is slated for three readings. If you would, Mr. Gibbons, please read the title.
An ordinance to adopt the updated 2019 solid waste management plan for the Stark-Tuscarora-Wayne Joint Solid Waste Management District and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, right before we went on break, Mr. Paulo sent us an email with, I believe it was a hundred and thirty-five pages of their report relating to this, related to the Stark-Tuscarora-Wayne Joint Solid Waste Management District. And what they're asking us to do in terms of review of that report is, since our community benefits from the recycling program outlined by the Stark-Tuscarora-Wayne Joint Solid Waste Management District Plan, in order for them to continue their existing programs, the legislative authorities of each municipal corporation, township, or township in the district must review and approve or disprove the 2019 solid, or excuse me, draft of the solid waste management plan by ordinance or resolution by Friday, September fourteenth of 2018. The district determines that the plan be ratified when a combination of municipal corporations and townships with a combined population comprising sixty percent of the district has approved the plan. And so from our standpoint, what it boils down to is if the plan is not ratified, the Director of Ohio EPA is required by state statute to prepare a plan for the district and order the district to implement the state's plan. Again, I'll admit, I went through the plan. I didn't see, there wasn't anything that, in my humble opinion, that jumped out in front of me as being monstrously different than what they had done in the past or what we currently have. And so with that, and I guess I'll, before I make any motion, I guess I'll open the floor for discussion, but I don't see that there's really any major issue in terms of what we're doing here. But with that, Mr. Silvestri?
I would agree, Mr. Sanders. I mean, I didn't see anything either. I guess I just, I wondered if there was anything that clarified more what the specific changes were, and I was aware of that fact that we do have to have a plan in place anyway, so... But has that come up, or has anyone said, here's the cliff notes or the main things that we hand out?
Other than what I saw in the summary that we had received prior to break, I mean, which at that point, I mean, it was, I'm not sure that any of the changes were really changes.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just have a question on the financing. I thought it was a little strange. Well, I understood from reading it, there was, you get much of your income through dumping fees, it's like a surcharge. I think, if I remember correctly, it was if you're in the district, it was a dollar. If you're outside the district in the State of Ohio, it's two dollars, but then if it came out, if you're out of the state, it went back down to a dollar. And I was just curious why, what's the reason for that? It seems counterintuitive to me. I think if it coming out from outside the state, it should be at least two dollars or maybe...
I would agree. I saw that. I was really hoping that they were going to have someone here this evening to discuss this, but they don't. At this point, since this does not need to be tended to until September fourteenth, we will have one meeting prior to that date. I mean, if it's imperative for that information to be gleaned prior to making a decision on this, we can, in fact, we can hold this, call this, give this reading this evening and get that information and then, you know, run it back through on the fourth and approve it then.
Do we know how many people are in the district?
Off the top of my head, I do not.
Because obviously, if sixty percent vote for it, no matter what we decide, it's immaterial.
That's absolutely true.
I didn't see it as a deal killer for me, but I was just, just thought that was a little strange as far as, I was, like I said earlier, I think it's kind of counterintuitive if you want, somebody who's outside the district, you know, Ohio pays a higher rate, but if it's coming from out of state, it goes back down to the lower rate. I'm sure they have a reason for it, but I was just curious about that.
Mark Newsbaum is our representative to the solid waste district. He does have an answer for that. I remember talking to him about that. I just can't remember what it is right off the top of my head, so I, we can get, answer and email it out to you if folks want to do that, or we can have Mark come at the next meeting to explain it.
I guess as long as we're not paying more than what everyone else in the district, I don't care what happens beyond that, you know, frankly.
Yeah, unless it's a federal, unless there's a federal tie to it, that they can only charge X, you know.
Interstate.
Yeah, yes.
I'm okay with letting it go through tonight, though.
Okay. Well, if that's the case, then I would propose to suspend the rules of council and place this on third and final reading.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Sanders is there, second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Silvestri?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Ansel?
Yes.
Mr. Cavan?
Yes.
Mr. Bostancic?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Okay, the rules are suspended. I look to you again, Mr. Sanders.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Any further discussion? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Silvestri?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Ansel?
Yes.
Mr. Cavan?
Yes.
Mr. Bostancic?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ordnance number twenty eighteen, day zero one five passes. Next is the penultimate resolution of the night, resolution number twenty eighteen, day zero four seven. It'll be presented by Mr. Silvestri, and if I read my notes correctly, it is budgeted. Before I get to you, Mr. Silvestri, I'll turn once again to Mr. Gibbons to read the title.
A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to purchase a vehicle in accordance with the capital plan for 2018.
Mr. Silvestri, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Okay, so, as you can see in front of you, this is for the purchase of a new four-by-four backhoe front loader. It's the piece of equipment that we think of when we think of a backhoe, obviously with the front loader on it as well. The current piece of equipment that this will be replacing is a nineteen ninety-eight, so twenty years old. It's a twenty-year-old backhoe with two-wheel drive. It's beyond its useful life, as we know from the details here. The central hydraulic system, along with many of the hydraulic cylinders, are in need of being repaired. This piece of equipment has seven thousand twenty-nine hours on it, and we're going to either trade it or sell it on gov deals, whatever brings the highest dollar value. City currently has a fleet of three of these, so this one will be retired out, and then the new unit that this legislation authorizes the purchase of will be added, added back We are going to use the state bid, which is typically, if I'm not mistaken, twenty-five to thirty percent lower in price than the actual, I guess, retail price, for lack of a better term. And I think we're going to go from talking with our public properties maintenance manager, we're definitely not going to buy the Cadillac, we're going to buy the Chevy, and those are just analogous terms, but that's what we're aiming for, is kind of a mid-grade unit, mid to high, as opposed to top of the line, because we want to, this is a workhorse of the cities, and we want to get as much value out of it as we can. So, if there's any questions, I know Kurt Denning is here to answer those.
Mr. Denning, I see you chewing gum, so not enough chewing gum or baling wire to keep this thing running another twenty years, huh?
He's chewing that gum for a reason, Mr. President.
Yeah, twenty years and seven thousand hours. I think we got our money's worth.
Yes.
Mr. Bostancic?
Just a really quick question. Was the amount of money in the legislation, is that pretty much what the list price might be, but you said the state bid would be lower, the twenty-five percent lower, or is that what you're expecting to pay through the state bid?
Yeah, that's what we expect to pay through state bid, but depending on what we get for trade-in or for gov deals, whichever brings the maximum amount, it looks like we'll get traded about fifteen thousand dollars.
Next, Kurt.
Well, I think if we get twenty years' use, four thousand dollars a year wouldn't be so bad, you know, as what that is prorated over the life.
If this were an easier vehicle to transport, Mr. Denning, I'd ask that we could include it in our next police cruiser slash fire engine review, but I know it probably involves a trailer and a lot of logistics to get it out there, but it would be interesting to see it brand-new. I'll just throw that out there.
He wants to operate it. Just don't let him kid you.
We could put it on the square for our business after-hours for our new quad.
There you go.
With that, I move for adoption.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Silvestri, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sanders. Would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Mr. Silvestri?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Ansel?
Yes.
Mr. Cavan?
Yes.
Mr. Bostancic?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
All right. Our final piece of legislation, looked like we were not taking too much of advantage of having been gone for six weeks, is resolution number twenty eighteen, day zero forty-eight, is presented by Mr. Ansel, and I note it's not required to have three readings. I think it's a kind of reaffirmation of what we've already discussed before. So before I get to you, Mr. Ansel, I'll have for the last time, Mr. Gibbons, read the title.
A resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours, sir.
Yes, this is our annual resolution accepting the amounts and rates determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. This is a second or a follow-up piece of legislation related to the 2019 annual budget, resolution 2018 dash thirty-six, which we previously passed on June eighteen. So it's a one-two progression. There's no changes to the millage as reference. It's five point eight total. You see the distribution from the general fund property tax, fire pension fund property tax, police pension fund property tax. The good news is, while there's no millage increase, we are projecting a revenue or a tax increase of a hundred and thirteen thousand five hundred dollars from 2018. So we're on a good trend. Andre provided a spreadsheet, and going back to 2013 to 2019, today, we're about a hundred and forty thousand dollars above where we were. So we are going in a very nice, controlled progression and direction. So this is nothing more than an accounting administrative function approval, so without further ado, I will, a motion to suspend the rules and, oh, just motion to adopt.
Okay, motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Any further discussion or questions? We pass this every year. Our hands are kind of tied in terms of what the millage is, so...
So true.
And it looks like part of this has to be new properties coming online and the increase in property values.
Correct.
Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll on the motion to adopt.
Mr. Ansel?
Yes.
Mr. Cavan?
Yes.
Mr. Bostancic?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Silvestri?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty eighteen, day zero forty-eight passes. That brings us to the miscellaneous portion, and we'll start, and we'll go down the line alphabetically. Mr. Ansel?
Yep, it's good to be back. Missed y'all, and let's finish with strong momentum in fact, half, part of this year.
Mr. Bostancic?
Nothing further.
Mr. Cavan?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Myers?
Welcome back, everybody. I think we're good. Thank you.
Mr. Sanders?
Nothing dead, Mr. President.
Mr. Silvestri?
It is good to be back, and I will say, in our regular clerk's absence, as she noted via email, it is going to be very difficult to not get in the habit of having the agenda as early as we received it this last time. So way to go, job well done. It was nice to be relaxed. I got ahold of it hours after she sent it, and I was able to just sit there and kind of digest it and take my time and go through it. So thanks to our clerk for all the work she did, getting it out prior to her leaving. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Ms. Warden, I will give you the last word.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just had one thing I'd like to thank, Mr. Kobelarsik, John Rice, and Amy Hamilton, all from the engineering department here for the city. They recently have been sending out email notifications of the different road construction that's been going on all summer. It's been very helpful, and I've been sharing it with my constituents via social media, and I've gotten really positive feedback, so I just want to encourage them to keep that up. That's great.
I amend my previous comment. This past weekend, the Heart and Soul Walk Run was downtown, and my understanding is there was almost eight hundred participants in our community, which was a great event. They dodged the rain, I think, successfully, and that went well. This coming weekend, leaving from the county fairgrounds, there is another event, if you like to do that outside, running or walking and biking, is the Break the Cycle event, which will have three different bike ride lengths and then walk through our downtown. So if you're interested in that, that'll be taking place this Saturday.
And I'd just like to thank Mr. Denning for being the ringmaster this summer with regard to all the paving and maintenance projects and coordinating all that. I know it's been a monumental task. You get complaints when the roads aren't paved, and you get complaints when the roads are tied up, because we are paving. I know it's a thankless task, and on a personal note, thanks for changing the light there. And I didn't ask, on the corners of North and Walnut Street, as I told him, I plan to practice another ten years, and at the rate that thing changed, I was going to spend one of those sitting at that light. So, thank you.
I can take all the credit for that, but I have wonderful staff and administration working with these guys, and Roger, particularly.
Yeah, I didn't mean to exclude Roger, but he left early, so he doesn't get any credit.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I had one comment.
Sure.
I wanted to let everyone on council...